Okay, let's call our meeting to order and we can... I hate to break in on all the conversation. Everybody's having a good time. Yeah, probably ought to do business a little bit here today. So, commissioners, before the manager Star tree thing that anybody wants to say first of all. Okay, I think some commissioners may be wanting to go to that ceremony. What time is it?
Ten o'clock.
Yeah.
Thirty oh two, East Central, EMS Station Three.
And, but who's coming through? I forgot who's...
Bob Flood. Jamaican Bob Flood. No. American Bob Flood.
Is that the one kind of hillside central?
Right. North Side Street there.
What is that?
Okay, so if we're done, fine. If we're not, we'll keep doing business here. But in the meantime, if anything else commissioners to begin? If not, Mr. Manager?
Commissioners, we have really one topic or two topics, I'll say. But the first one, we want to just finalize the legislative agenda before you guys vote on it tomorrow. And I'll let Will go through that and then I'll have one comment about animal control fees.
Couple of weeks ago, we went over the initial draft of this document. This is kind of an even more condensed version. You know, just kind of start with what the key initiatives were. We discussed last time, or the urban area designation. I don't think there was a whole lot of discussion about that, but that would essentially have portions of Sedgwick County down incorporated areas declared an urban area pursuant to the Constitution that would allow additional special legislation later on that would potentially benefit the county in numerous ways. On the election commissioner, we would have a post-election audit bill. What that would look like, I don't know at this point. And then also a change in the budget approval process and the application of county policies to the election commissioner. I know there was some discussion, there might be a county that's looking at potentially changing the way that the election commissioner is selected from the Secretary of State to the Board of County Commissioners, but we took that part of it out. So, we would just be looking to get control over the budget and the county policies, particularly HR policies. Number three is the adequate support of mental health services. And this language has been vetted with Tim Kaufman and with Sheriff Easter and, you know, I think this fairly well states what our position is at this point. I'd be more than open to more suggestions on it. On the previous draft, on number four, we had a statement about economic development. I'd taken that off of this draft, but spoke with the manager earlier. It sounded like perhaps we want to put something back in. I'd leave that at the will of the board at this point on what we want to say about economic development or if we want to make a statement about supporting economic development programs.
We had a discussion with some of the commissioners last week after I had pulled it where they still wanted it in, but suggested a general statement, you know, just a couple of words about economic development. So, we can put that back in if it's the will of the commission. But before we do that, on the third one, adequate support of mental health services, the third paragraph, second sentence, I think Tim sent you last week, an edit to take that out.
Okay.
Unless the commission wants to keep it in.
On item number three, three?
Three, three.
Yeah. It got pretty wordy there, so that middle sentence came out.
The main thing is that you don't want to terminate Medicaid eligibility when they're incarcerated. Right. That's the main point.
Correct. So, just keep the first sentence of that in or strike the whole thing?
Well, the first and third.
First and third.
First and third.
You just need to tweak the third sentence a little bit.
Okay.
But yeah, the point is to suspend rather than terminate so that as they come out, they're immediately eligible for service, for payment for services.
Send us the updated version.
Yes. Okay. Well, yeah, that's good.
So, then it comes back to the fourth point on economic development.
Well, commissioners, any comment?
We should have something on that.
Oh, I'm sorry, Richard.
Well, I opposed that fourth one, obviously. I passed out that addition here. I'd like us to add the following for taxpayer protection. Sedgwick County supports amendment to the Kansas Constitution that would require voter approval for all tax increase, all state tax increases and prohibit retroactive tax increases. So, that's... There's some hypocrisy involved in telling us that we can't raise taxes and I think it's been brought up that they should have to go to voters as well. And considering the retroactive tax increase that a lot of people are going to feel here when they get their taxes next year. And my understanding is that we could do a law, but it would be... It'd probably be better if it was an amendment to the Constitution.
Okay, any comment on that suggestion? My comment is, I agree with the sentiment, but I just am reluctant to try to stand behind language that says, here's how you ought to do your business. I don't like them telling us how we ought to do our business. I think you know, I've objected to several things legislature's done recently that controls what we do and I don't want to... I guess I just don't want to make this as a policy or a statement about it.
Well, keep in mind, to me, this is about telling how to conduct the business, it's about defending our constituents. And keep in mind, a constitutional amendment would require a vote of people. So, basically what we're saying is, hey, put this on the ballot, let the people decide if they want to put this restriction upon their state government. So, that's kind of what, you know, I think it's... I'd like to see the citizens of the state of Kansas have their opportunity to vote on something like that.
Well, we could either, you know, have a discussion about it. Does everybody have an opinion? Do they want this out? We just say that and give a move. But I prefer not to add it, Commissioner, although I understand your sympathy and I think it's got legitimacy, but...
I think they introduced legislation last year to do this. It didn't go very far, but I think there was legislation introduced, if I remember correctly. I guess on a practical side, I like the platform to be stuff I really want to get done and I think we can plan for success for every item on the agenda. So, to me, every item on the agenda, as has been handed out this morning, is an action item. It's a piece of legislation that I could help write. I would have ideas on how to write the legislation. I could carry the bill and I advocate for change. To me, everything on the platform is of that caliber. And my only concern about economic development would be, what are we asking for specifically? That's a policy statement, we support more economic development tools, but I couldn't write the bill. I don't know what we're asking for. So, to me, it's more of a policy statement than a key initiative, if you will. I don't know how to measure success there. You know, what are we advocating for exactly? We don't know. It's more of a generalized statement. So, I guess if you want it on here, to me, it's much like the pages, the pages of stuff we took off this list, they didn't have any definition. They just simply stated a position of the county. What makes these items that are left here unique is they're actually action items. You can actually go write the bill and understand exactly what we're asking for legislatively. But if you're going to put a statement about economic development, my only concern would be define exactly what you want, what tool, way, ask for it. That needs to be clarified, otherwise it's just a policy statement. So, I don't know if I agree about the general, about our general statement since we're trying to simplify this document. But I agree, we want all the tools, but I want to know exactly what we're asking for because it's going on here. Regards to Commissioner Manzah's suggestion, again, I think the legislation has been drafted. I think, again, trying to be pragmatic and trying to be successful, I don't think a constitutional amendment is likely to happen because I haven't know how hard that is, but I think that legislation is more likely. And so, I guess I support the sentiment that as Chairman just said, I support the sentiment and I think it'd be fine to be in the platform. I don't expect we would lead on that, although we would not write the legislation. And I certainly would, I don't think I would expect a constitutional amendment to actually pass on the topic, but I do agree with the sentiment that you shared this morning. I think it's appropriate that they would be under the same rules that other jurisdictions are.
Okay, thank you. Any, does anyone, I mean, what's the consensus, commissioners? Do you want this on or not on? I think I hear two votes right now that say we prefer not to have it on there, or two opinions.
Well, I'm not sure that we need to move forward with the verbiage that we've got here for requiring a constitutional amendment. I think if the legislature starts working this, we can tell them we'd support something, but let's see how, what they've already got ahead. As far as economic development, I agree that we need something in here on economic development, but we need some specific verbiage that we can go with that we understand that directs us, that would give direction to the legislature on what we really want.
Well, we had discussed last week and I know there's discussion in several, especially GWP, but with some representatives close to GWP in reference to providing an amount of money, whatever that is, $10 million for economic development incentives to be used for mega projects or tools for mega projects that could potentially be used in this region or in this county. So, we can get a specific ass specifying mega project or not even focus on a dollar amount to say economic development tools. I mean, we can go as far as providing some specificity along those lines. So, it's generally what everybody's talking about is the state needs to come more on board with providing some economic development tools to help these mega projects either anchor here or come here.
So, is this going to be on the legislative agenda, the city of Wichita, that economic development position?
Well, the discussions I've had with GWP is that for GWP, the city and us, for us to have it on there.
Do you know how they're going to word theirs?
We're a little more advanced and we're a little more ahead of the game than they are right now. Haven't been able to get anything from them right now.
Richard, you want to comment on the economic development policy? You want to have a statement like that or not? Okay.
We can put something in there as a placeholder and adjust it as we go along as soon as it gets firmed up. But in order to get it voted on tomorrow, we can be a little more general and get specific as it gets refined over the next couple of months, however you want to do it. We can write something specific like I did last week, but put a little more specificity in there tied to mega projects or however you want to do it.
There's three pieces, there's three components we talk about when we meet and Mike has talked about the mega deal part. There's a real look at regulations and minimizing regulations, facilitate businesses coming in, and then there's the workforce component. So, we could structure a three-tiered kind of statement, supportive or not of all of those items.
Well, I kind of like that breakdown, kind of analytical, where we can say some specific things. You know, on the one hand, I was wanting to have a really tight legislative platform, one that was very specific on things that we could move forward. And I understand Jim's comment that that's more of a policy position and so I don't want to go against my own preference on a legislative agenda. However, I think it's important enough that I would support a statement saying that we think the state needs to, you know, be involved in mega projects and not leave it all to local government to try to attract business and industry. I mean, we all want jobs, we all want economic development. It does benefit the whole state, so I don't think that we're out of line in asking or having that statement in our policy or in our platform. So, I think to get back to the first issue that Richard brought forward, I don't think there's, doesn't sound like there's a consensus to include that.
Just to be clear, as I'm not sure you, keep my position away. If I was going to reword this, I'd say Sedgwick County supports legislation that would require voter approval for all state tax increases and prohibit retroactive tax increases. I think legislation is fine. I support the sentiment and I would be willing to support amendment to the platform that would simply state that, but as a legislative...
Okay, well, are there, is there a consensus in to put something on about voter approval for tax increases? All right, I don't, I'd say that issue then fails to make our legislative agenda. We can deal with it as it comes forward. And on economic development, do we want a statement or not? Something that might follow along with what Tom suggested.
Yes.
Yeah, if we want mega projects, we need to make sure that we're not looking for them for everything, but for certain mega projects, it's important to get the state to support us.
I have a question on that. So, when the state offers incentives, for example, is it someone, the Department of Commerce makes the decision, but the legislators themselves don't make the decisions on how to apply those tools? So, taxpayers are entrusted to an department that has access to presumably to some funding of some sort to apply that towards economic development. It's not legislators themselves, it's someone within the department, is that correct?
Well, I'd certainly appropriate the money to support whatever that incentive is or...
And the governor.
Right.
The voters, select the governor.
All right, I think then that there's consensus that we need that economic development statement.
We'll write something up and circulate it amongst the commissioners today. We got to talk to you about another mega project today, so we'll talk to you and bring that statement to you when we do that.
Okay, now, Will, I guess you're going to have something, this is going to be on our agenda tomorrow.
Correct.
Right. Yeah, I think at this point, the only other thing we really need to do is to decide whether some of these secondary initiatives are something we want to move forward with or just kind of leave them on a secondary list as maybes or if we have time that, you know, I know that the corrections bill was one we had tried last year, which would have allowed a pre-detention for violation of pre-trial release orders and allow our pre-trial services supervision officer to detain those folks. That bill actually had passed through the Senate and kind of got stalled in the House. And I know there's some folks from our corrections department that were hoping we would do that again this year. I don't have an opinion one way or another, but...
Who's asking for this? The corrections?
Corrections Department.
I mean, what, I mean, does jail have any thoughts on this? Is, I mean, the county productive there or...
Well, I don't think the jail would have any thoughts so much as it would be, other counties evidently are allowing this just via kind of an administrative order and our judges here in the 18th Judicial District are not allowing that. So, we'd kind of be getting ourselves more on par with Wyandotte and Johnson County. You know, again, there's quite a bit of information on it last year. I don't have all that right here at my fingertips right now, but I'd be more than happy to discuss it. I don't have anyone's here from corrections.
I understand that correction discussions is forekind argument four, but my only concern is effective of having one in jail.
Right. Yeah, there's, among other concerns, but...
Well, the decision press this morning, or the consensus is to come, is whether or not we want to keep these secondary initiatives in that category.
I would say so, yes.
Well, I'm supportive of that and just so long as our representatives in Topeka understand we don't want them forgotten and we want to advance them if the opportunity arises.
And I think it's important to tell our lobbyists that these are some things, if they come up, why we've got a position on them, but if they don't come up, don't push them. Like, these are the things we want you to push. These are the things we want you to be aware of.
Well, I need to clarify that. Are we not asking that some of this be introduced, like the pre-trial detention bill? I think we are the ones who asked that at the interview in previous sessions. Do you want us to do that or not with these secondary items?
Well, I think we want to try to advance them, but they're just not our highest priority.
Right, but I think, I thought heard Commissioner Ginnett say that we're not going to, if there's a vote on it, this is our position, but there's not going to be a vote on it unless we ask for it. I mean, I don't have a dog to fight, but I want to know, do you want these bills introduced or not? Because Jason Walker and the discretionator are going to want the guidance on whether they should go to the legislature and ask for some of these bills. So, is it all right that we go ahead and introduce them?
Yes, I mean, I think we want to advance them. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I just bring it up. Again, just because we, this is three years in a row, excuse me, excuse me, three years in a row, we've had ballots and the canvassing that have all entered this odd category of someone signs an affidavit for disabled voter and they don't know how to fill out the envelope to make it legal for someone who's unable to sign for themselves to complete the process and through a mail ballot system. And so, they could transport the disabled person down to a poll site to do this. That doesn't seem very practical. So, yes, I'd like to see a statement that would say somebody that Sedgwick County supports legislative review and potentially provision for disabled, I don't know how you say this exactly, need to work on the language here, but legislative review and provision for disabled voters to complete mail ballot process. It's an issue that's continued to come up once in a while. I mean, yes, there are a tremendous amount of voters, but it's enough that I think we ought to raise the issue. The envelopes, in my opinion, are lacking and this is now a national news story. I think we need to address it. And so, we ought to be on our platform if we take a position, I guess. I did contact Brian Caskin with the state election office. They're trying to find a way to solve this. They're working on provisions. They plan to introduce legislation. So, we're not alone in this. We don't necessarily have to carry the water, but I think it needs to be on our platform.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay.
If you want to write whatever and tell them that we want to try to help push that forward.
You put that under election commissioner then?
I would. Look at election issues.
Yeah, I can just add it under with our election commissioner items.
The first thing I would simply say is, you know, just a review of what our current process is, because I just think it's just leaves the voters confused. There's no way to complete that process in a way that makes any sense for someone in this situation. So, you know, they might discover the problem. I don't know if we want them to review, you know, review the issue and then hung in on the right solution. I don't even, I have my own ideas on how we'd solve this, but I'd like to let someone else figure out the right solution. But I do think we need to address it.
I think the word review is the right term because the problem is, how do you verify then in the future, everyone doing this is in fact to say, I think that's been the problem in the past is, how do you verify that in the future? And so, I think reviewing, because I don't know what the solution is or if there is one, that's why I support review to figure out what, if anything, can be done.
Okay, I think we agree with that.
Yeah, I'll get that added under election commissioner. We'll just have election issues in general and have a category for that.
Okay, we made some modifications. You got them all?
I do.
Make sure there's any more on this brief agenda this year. Okay?
Thank you.
Good.
All right. The second issue I was going to bring up is, one of the items for BOCC meeting is on animal control fees. And talking to the city manager yesterday, asking him for some relief on that, he told, he asked that we would defer that. There are several things going on right now in relation to some of the functions that we're working through the city and the county absorbing some of those functions. And a part of that is a fee study. And he asked that that fee study be allowed to complete for 2018 before we pass anything because it's liable to change. And he also said that, you know, whatever fee is put in there, and in this case, it almost was a double or triple fee increase, he wouldn't ask, he wouldn't expect it to be done automatically. In other words, he would, he said that we could put in a graduated scale so it would be phased in, we wouldn't automatically do a triple fee increase. But still, we need to wait until we get that fee study back. And that would not only affect animal control, it would affect those functions that we're looking at, potentially bringing into the county. So, you'll see that and I will bring that up tomorrow. Or matter of fact, Justin will bring it up and he'll come to the mic and ask for a deferment. And that is why we're asking for it.
And it'll also include that we don't have to have a kiosk in there and...
I specifically asked him about that. We're going to continue to address that issue with him. And as part of our discussions on the functions, the kiosk is part of that. Tim had already started that work on his end yesterday before I even talked to Bob. So, that is one of the issues that we're going to address.
And we're not going to have to put the full-time employee over there starting January first because we don't have a kiosk.
Right, we're not doing anything January first.
Very good. Good job.
All right.
Now, I think that's the real sticking point for some of us is that, you know, we understand sometimes fees have to go up, but we don't understand why they've been collecting them, why they can't keep collecting them. We have to do some...
There's going to be on these four or five functions, there's going to be some give and take. And that, to me, is one of the things that they need to take. All right, that's all I have.
Commissioners, anything to bring up this morning?
Actually, I guess I do have one. I got an interesting phone call yesterday and I might ask Treasurer to speak to it, but someone called and said that they tried to pay their taxes online, but they got an error. So, they tried to do it again and they got the same error. Then the bank called and said they were overdrafted because they paid the $1,400 in taxes twice. So, I'm not sure what's going on there, but there's an issue, I don't know what it is. I just wanted to raise it up. Somewhere between Treasurer's Office and IT, I guess somebody needs to go figure out what's going on there and if there's a problem for one taxpayer, my guess is probably it is for other taxpayers too. He was trying to do not a credit card payment, but a bank transfer, a bank EBT or whatever it's called, payment. And that, and so, that's the situation. And so, whatever's going on there needs to be understood and if there's a problem, hopefully get that fixed.
Linda, have you had other complaints?
No, we haven't. Wes's people did a great job running that web payment for us, so I don't know if it might have just been a small hiccup. Wes, I don't know how to even answer that one, but we've not had anybody else call Jim, but we'll give it a bit of credit at the back, definitely, but I can't answer the IT end, I'm sorry.
Just want to make sure there's not a problem, that's all.
Okay, anything else? I was wondering, could we have a report either in staff or at a BOCC meeting about the performance results of our juvenile services? Glenda sent that report around, kind of an annual report that Dr. Delores Craig Moreland did. And just so we all understand what that means, I think a, some kind of report, and I don't... And I don't care whether it's at the BOCC meeting or here, but just like to have somebody make a presentation on it.
Okay.
Okay.
Rest of you will get Glenn on it.
Okay, anything else here around the table, Mr. Counselor? David, what do you got?
Nothing today.
Okay, all right. How about the other elected folks? Nothing? Kelly, did, how'd K-State do last weekend?
As I expected, we did.
Great, all right. Well, don't have anything else, so thank you all for being here, appreciate it. We'll be adjourned.
Trying to get on their schedule today for K-GoGo?
No.
I guess this afternoon, maybe?